Let's call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation as in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Dev Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice Lucas Joe, yes?
Okay, um, I'd like to ask the superintendent if we received any public comments prior to today's meeting?
None under this, no. But I did do a survey and we'll talk about not all 475 comments, but.
Good. Okay, we will wait for that. For the good of the organization, I just want to say how much I do really continue to appreciate the really fabulous sort of announcements and posts that continue to come out on social media. I always enjoy seeing those. So again, I'm really appreciative of everything that's being done. I'd like to open it up to the school committee. Is there anything that anyone would like to add for the good of the organization? Okay, then we'll move on to superintendent's report. Ed, or are you gonna start or Ford?
I got it. So this is quick. Because of the heavy frost and the snow, there's no activity out in the fields right now. It's all in accordance with our long-term schedule. Building Committee, we're making progress, winding it down, slow, but we're making it. More work, a lot will be accomplished, I believe, next week with the school basically closed and but open to our workers. Thank you.
Thanks Ford.
What Jeff?
Actually, there is a question. Jeff?
Ford, are we on time and on budget?
We are so far, we are a year ahead of time, Jeff. And we are so far under budget, we can do an athletic field. Does that help you?
It really does bring light into a very gloomy week.
Oh cheer up.
Okay, I have to admit, I do miss seeing the building, so I like getting your reports.
Well, you know, I should have added during the thing, you can always go up. If you go up there Thursday after you put your order in, you get some very nice soup, you can get cakes, you can get cookies. And I've only done it a couple of times, but it's well worthwhile, everybody.
Get your orders in early. We had to shut it down Monday at 9:00 AM because it just blew up over this weekend.
Well, I have to admit, I saw, it was, I don't remember what, but it was some report from a committee and acting and in it, the culinary orders were highlighted.
Yep.
So word is getting out.
And then, and also the work with the Food Link organization.
Yeah, several hundred meals a week.
Wonderful.
Very impressive.
Very busy, very busy. Admissions, I'll just show, I'll share one slide. I can answer more detail about it. You can see, as of today, we have a total of 340 applications. Compared to last year, through the whole cycle, we had 390. We still have several weeks to go where applications will be coming in. 255 of those applications are from member district students. About 230 of those have been processed already, which means they're viable. Applications, about 41 eligible out of district applicants. That basically includes the declarant towns of we, as we affectionately refer to them, in Watertown. We're working on a 200 slot estimate for app, you know, the numbers we can accept. And then there are 44 what we're calling ineligible out of district applications. They're ineligible because they belong to a district that already has Chapter 74 program. So and Anthony is on if anyone has any questions. But it's clear, not all of our member district students are going to get in this year, so.
Oh dear, okay.
Managing success.
Yes, I saw Alice with her hand up.
I was just illustrating five Chapter 74 programs.
I thought you were Gary, you know. Any, any questions on admissions? Yes, Jeff?
The only comment is even taking in 200 students, we may have a waiting list from member towns, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I guess that that the recommended number of to build a school for 400 students is probably something that we should fully ignore at this point.
Well, I've ignored it ever since it was brought up, but yes.
There's a historic note there.
Okay, Alice?
I guess Minuteman must be doing something right because the kids want to come to Minuteman, right? And also, I continue to be phenomenally annoyed that we didn't get to build a bigger school and I'll just shut up now.
Understood.
Um, speaking of, you know, just following up on Alice's comments, you know, clearly Minuteman is doing something right because kids want to come to Minuteman. I'm curious if there is anything that you're hearing that, you know, is a little out of the ordinary from students who are applying this year of why they want to come.
I'll let Anthony answer that since he meets with every one of them and their families.
Yeah, Pam, I wouldn't say that anything particularly out of the ordinary, aside from I think some of the students who have had a chance to come on a tour during the school day to see like kids actually doing something and not just sitting at a desk staring at a computer is appealing. So I think that's something and I think, you know, just they get to see what, you know, I think I talked to, you know, our former Science Department Chair who just retired at the end of last year and he used to talk about the old building. You know, the new building is a, is a physical space that reflects the programs that we've always had. And I think now people get to see, you know, they're not distracted by, you know, some of the limitations of the old building and they see the programs for what they are, which is world-class, you know, things that no kid's gonna get to do if they don't come to Minuteman. So I think that's, you know, the pandemic actually in some ways helps us that kids really want to learn and want to do and not just receive information. So I think that and our, our students are great ambassadors for what we do here. And when they talk about it, I mean, I don't have to say anything once they start talking about what they do.
And I know it doesn't just happen, so I do want to thank, congratulate and thank Anthony and everyone else who is involved in, you know, and helping to, you know, convince, you know, new potential students of the value of Minuteman.
Yeah, following social media in Arlington today, there was a thread going about why can't we get more girls interested in STEM fields? What is it that we're not doing? We're not, we're not attracting them. What can we do differently? And I held my fingers above the keyboard and I thought, no, I think Minuteman's applications are running along just fine right now.
Any other questions or comments on enrollment? Okay.
So the next item is a vote to approve an amendment to our reopening plan, which you approved back in August. And the, the adjustment in our hybrid model, as I discussed last school committee meeting, is to add another grade in-person academics. And, well, perhaps I could have a motion in a second and then I could do a brief, brief presentation.
I will move that.
And answer any questions.
Second.
Okay, that was quick, okay. So let me just, I, after the last meeting, I expanded the, the the feedback loop, if you will, and we just had a survey which we sent out to parents. Some of you saw it and I want to just show you what the results were of that. And here we go, here. So everybody see that, okay?
Yes.
So we had an amazing response rate of about 74%. I actually closed the survey a couple of days ago, just so that parents who wanted to respond had to call us because we also asked for the name of their student, which all 475 provided the names so that we could schedule their student the way that they wanted them scheduled. So just to see where that 475 comes from, you see every class was well represented. 144 from ninth grade, 141 10th graders. I see 11th graders were defined in two ways. One is 11th graders and then, I'm sorry, this doesn't show, but an 11th grader planning to go out and co-op. So there were 27 of those and then the same with the seniors. 22 seniors were gonna, are on co-op. So a total of 94 out of 130. So a pretty good representation from each class. And then when you look at each town, the, the representation of each town sort of follows along the line of their enrollment in the school. So I felt very comfortable with this data set in terms of its reliability and validity because of the response rate around this target population. So the big question was, when Minuteman adds an academic in-person week, what will your child do? And close to 80% of them said that they would attend both the in-person academic week and the in-person CTE week. 81 of them said they would continue to attend the in-person CTE week, but at this point weren't committing to the in-person academic week. And when you looked at the 98 or so comments in this whole question, those families really just needed to be reassured about our safety protocols, about adequate PPE. So we're going to be reinforcing that in our communications around to our families next, next week. And then about 5% or 21 students, which is about the same as we've had all year, are gonna stay fully remote. There were a lot of comments. Many of them, you know, really just wanting to be reassured about safety protocols, about the distances. And I kind of reviewed what were, our plans were last school committee meeting in the presentation. We're complying with everything. We're not going to be increasing the capacity of the buses dramatically at all because we have enough buses under the contract that we have to maintain the lower capacity on the buses. And that whole transportation question, which we asked in this question five, about 309 folks are gonna continue to take the bus. Then there was a large, a group of 76 which currently drive their kid to school or their kids drive themselves, that would continue. Then there was a larger contingency that we're gonna find their own way. I think the question says, we will find our own design for transportation. And when you looked at those comments, again, there was concerns about buses being too full and that sort of thing. So we'll probably have a good number of those folks go on the bus. Some parents asked about carpooling together, which is fine as long as they, you know, comply with the guidelines as they're coming to school and all that. Oh, and then this just, it's hard to read, I can, but this is just, we had representation from every program. Very good representation from every program. So I don't know if anyone has any question on that feedback. Jennifer?
So I guess the question is about transportation and did you communicate with the parents that there was reimbursement available if they transported their own kids?
I did not widely. I talked to the MPA about it.
Okay.
And then I mentioned it at the school committee. I didn't offer that up at this point.
Do you think that would encourage parents to maybe make the effort to take their kids? I don't know. I mean, I just.
You know, we'll put that in a, in a subsequent communication when we have a better sense of how, if we do have any, you know, pinch points where we need families to do that.
Okay. No, I just was curious to know if anybody knew that was an option and whether that would change their minds.
Many of them knew it was an option, but I didn't promote it just because of the the accounting.
No, does that, you know, I I understand that. I just, I was wondering if, right. So as long as people were maybe potentially aware of it.
Yeah, we'll make them aware of it if we have a need for it.
Okay, I have Jeff then Alice.
So Ed, I have one question and one comment and I bet you know what my question is. Is how do you have similar kind of information on the teacher's view of the plan of moving to 50% would be the question?
That, yes, the teachers had their own survey and the students had their own survey. That was sort of my next thing I was gonna talk about. I've been meeting, I've been meeting with the senior class officers. And we're gonna continue to meet every Wednesday for the rest of the school year. And that's been very, very helpful to me. And I think it's been helpful for them to clarify some misperceptions about what we were planning to do and also to get some feedback from them about what they would value in an adjusted schedule, which has been accommodated in a schedule that went out today to teachers. The biggest concern with teachers is the safety and health guidelines, of course. From this, and the vaccinations, you know, I mean, that's like everybody's
teacher.
Happiness, you know. And I have, I think I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this. I've, I've verbally contracted with a, an urgent care center that has four urgent care centers, one in Bedford, which is nearby, one in Burlington. And they have agreed to vaccinate all of our staff all within a 90-minute period that we will schedule our staff to go to. I've already received the, the the registration forms that this company uses. And it'll be no charge to us, no charge to the staff. And it's very efficient when they're available. So I appreciate Ford actually got me in contact with the company and I spoke with the president of the company and I, I think the teachers have heard that. Yeah, I know they heard that through a meeting they had with their union. So I think that's, that's in the plan. So, once they're available, we will be vaccinated.
Okay, so here, here's my related comment. The relative comment is I'm looking at the numbers that you're getting from your parents of what they want to do. And I, I would like you to, I'd like my peers on this committee to understand how remarkable those numbers are. Because the lack of controversy regarding your 50% point is a little unusual, especially when you consider how many districts that our, our kids come from. And, and the reason it's as, as good as it is, is probably the measures you've taken and the communication you've done and the the, the clear plan that you stated and that you stuck to. So I look at those numbers and I said, gee, if only we had agreement between the population of schools and the school administration like that throughout the Commonwealth, we'd be in a much better shape. So compliments, kudos to you and your staff and the communication you've done. Again, there are no guarantees in any of this, right? Things can happen. But kudos and getting to the point in which you can get the, the statistics that I saw there, which are very compelling and impressive. So that's my comment.
So we have, March 1st is the, is the target date. We also discussed today, George and I and Brian Tilley discussed having a couple of trial runs the week before. Like on a Tuesday, do format A, on Thursday, do format B, just so we get the bus routes down, people get a chance to see what it's like. And then we can fix and tweak any things before we go into the 50% capacity on March 1st, which is a Monday. So any other questions about that?
I just want to make one comment. I, I'm really impressed with the breadth of the people that responded to this. I think that that is, that is, getting this kind of response from parents who are busy and doing their own thing and trying to keep their own lives together is pretty impressive. And I, and I appreciate when you sent out the request. You told people that the survey was coming, that you wanted a percentage so you had, I thought that was good. Thank you.
Yes, 62 and a half percent. That was, I think I said 65 and we got 75, so it's great.
No, I think that's, I think it was impressive. I think that people, they want their kids back in school and they'll do what they can to get it to happen.
Right, we need them here. I mean, I won't go on anymore.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table to approve the amendment to the reopening plan and move to 50% capacity. We'll move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Dev Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice Lucas Joe, yes?
Okay.
Thank you.
The Student Opportunity Plan?
Yeah, so, this, you're all familiar, maybe you're not. The Student Opportunities Act was passed more than a year ago. And what it was designed to put more money into the districts that were social, you know, economically distressed or we're not spending up to the foundation or we're struggling to do that. And so Minuteman does qualify for some of those funds. Only $13,500, but we still had to submit our plan, which we submitted our plan was in the packet. And we're gonna be using that money for our target population, which is non-traditional students. Mainly women in the trades, women in STEM. So we're gonna take out those funds and develop our, our, our plan to support those kids, which is described in, in the, I think from pages four, five, six and seven on. So if anyone, and then there was a little write-up on it on page eight in there, which kind of coincides with our World of Work program, which is dealing with sixth and seventh graders. It's, we're gonna make the most of the money, so if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'll move the Student Opportunity Plan before we have questions.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So any questions or comments? Alice?
Thank you for supporting women in the trades and women in STEM.
Yes.
Always.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move to a vote, roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice Lucas Joe, yes?
Okay, thank you, everyone. Anything else said before we move on?
No, George is gonna talk a little bit about student activities, athletics. I may chime in there, George. I just had an email from Heather. And then just a reminder about NIA. So take it away, Mr. Clement.
Sure, thank you. In your packet, you'll see the student activities continues to go on. Skills USA is working again this week with the sale program, which is Senior Adventures in Leadership. We have a couple of kids participating. And they have a follow-up at the end of the month. Our First Robotics Club is going great and you had the presentation last time. We've already completed a little project, there's some pictures there in the packet you can see. Love the enthusiasm of Deanna Clark. She's doing a great job with the kids and she really loves, loves working with them, breaking them into teams. It's awesome. And then just in general, just so you know, there's, there are, there are activities. It's virtual but, and different. But peer leaders can, you know, who are juniors, they continue to meet weekly with freshmen during advisory to, to help guide them along. I think Tony alluded to the student ambassadors who continue to help out in the admissions process, you know, talking with kids and families. So that continues. We were just talking about, you reminded me that the, we have a non-traditional coordinator, that's Mr. John Donato and he's been holding meetings every week with the girl or anybody who's in a non-traditional career. Particularly getting kids ready for the Girls in Trades Conference, which is coming up. You know, a community service is, continues to be active. The Interact Community Service Club has been raising funds for the Leukemia and Forma Society. And GSA Plus has done an excellent job, meeting every week, expanding the amount of kids. It's probably a solid 20 kids, 25 kids who meet in that group every week and they find it really supportive. So student activities are doing, are doing pretty well. If anybody has any questions?
Does everybody know who the GSA Plus is?
I don't know.
It's the Gray State, Gay Straight Alliance Plus. So I think that's an important part of keeping the diversity and the acceptance at Minuteman viable.
So for athletics, I'll, I'll kick it right over to Dr. B. I don't know what he just read, so.
Well, you, you may know athletics has been, well, it, some of it drives me crazy, but Minuteman has not participated in anything because it just wasn't practical or safe for us. There has been talk, you may have heard about this fall season two, where some communities are planning to have a football season, believe it or not, outside and Minuteman will not be participating in that. Heather had to explain some of the MIAA memos to me. That's the Massachusetts Intercollat, whatever it is. I don't know why we even pay dues to them sometimes, but the one thing that we did talk about, and George, you can, was this whole concept of esports. And Heather's looked into that and we're looking at, can we start some of these esports activities, which have become quite a thing at colleges and such, where scholarships are even being provided to students who excel in, in gaming. So we're looking at some of that. George, I don't know if you've talked to Heather more about it than I have.
Yeah, she's prepared a survey to see what kids are interested in. You know, we're working with a, with a league that was presented to us through MSAA or MSSA. I get those two confused, but, but it's legit. There's a lot of schools in Massachusetts working with this league to find out what kind of games the kids want. There's all sorts of different, you know, permutations. But she's ready to deploy that and we'll see what kind of interest and the price tag isn't too brutal upfront, you know, it's like $65 a kid.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how many will want to be interested, but we'll see.
Okay, we have a question. Jennifer? Then Ford.
So I guess my only question is because I have a son who's interested in the esports thing is how how much control do we have over what the game is they're playing? Because some of them are pretty brutal.
Yeah, they, the, the league gives a list of 10 games that they, I'd have to really dig into what those games are, but I, I think they're, you know, I don't think you're gonna get any of those really graphic, gory, you know, because they're trying to appeal to a broad base. So some games are more like football, you know, and some are just like puzzles and there are.
It's not the shoot them up.
There are things like
Fortnite, Fortnite games.
But not quite with the whole, not, not like, you know, not as bad as you think.
Fortnite's the one that, that.
Yeah, Fortnite's not on the list. The first, it's the one that I know. Okay, so that's not on there. Okay.
Just, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
I should mention Heather, Heather is our athletic director, Heather Platter, sorry.
Thank you, Ed. Ford?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in how the students feel, the student athletes feel about not having athletics. I'm seeing in my own community. I'm seeing in my own community, they are having athletics. I actually have a granddaughter participating in one, but they are, they are having them. They're doing it very safely. There have been no cases at all, at least in our community, of any issues related to kids. In some other communities, they are, then they just cancel the games or they do whatever they have to do. So they're following everything they should. But I look at athletics like any extracurricular activity is part of somebody's education. And in some cases, I think athletics give kids the confidence to do better in academics or whatever the skill is. And I think by saying no, I understand the health reasons why. But I think they can, it seems to be managed in many communities. And it's working okay, to my knowledge, and how do the kids feel?
They're heartbroken, some of them. It's awful. It's just another thing on the list that they've lost because of COVID. You know, whether it's in-person CTE time, student activities, just being together, it's, it's awful. We'll see what the spring brings. You know, what the numbers are. Hopefully, we're gonna have a spring season. But we won't have it here. You know, we'll have to be offsite. And one of the other issues for us is that the, the fields that we had rented are not renting to anybody, will not rent to us because we're from outside of the community. So we're in a worse place than we were last year, this, you know, for spring sports.
I guess I understand that, but you know, what I'm thinking about is come the fall. And we have athletic fields. Hopefully will be done in October. I think I would love to see the school move towards, at least in the fall, having an athletic program again for kids. Because I think it's so important for them, from an education point of view, from a social ability point of view, from an activity point of view. It's healthy to be athletic, and if it's done properly, which I know will do, I just would like to see the fall open, if we can.
No argument here.
No. Jeff.
Coming from Mr. Not Optimist here, I think the fall is gonna look very good for both our schools and for the sports. As long as the, the vaccine works with the variants we have. I think that there's gonna be, I think that the vaccination is gonna go faster than they're saying right now. I think we're gonna be all set in the fall. And as I said, I'm not the most optimistic person in the world, but I'm, I'm feeling comfortable with that. So this, this spring is gonna be ugly still. But the fall is, I think, gonna be, you know, two thumbs up, so.
I don't think I'm arguing about the spring. I think it's the fall that I really hope that something happens to the kids. Very important.
Okay, uh, Michael.
No, I was asking about spring versus fall sports. The question's been answered.
Okay. Any other questions on athletics? Okay.
Last on my agenda is the NIAS reaccreditation visit has been scheduled for November 1st through the 4th. What we don't know is whether it's gonna be in person or virtual. They have not determined that yet. So when we know, we'll let you know. Draft reports have been written, so all the, you know, documentation is ready. Mary Ann Hamm is helping us polish those up so that they, you know, the base work has been done. We've also begun uploading documentation to support all the standards, and that will continue to, that's an ongoing process as well that Mary Ann and Amy Peralta are really managing.
Okay, any questions for George?
Thanks.
George, anything you want to add?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy, were you raising your hand? Yes.
I just wanted to say, um, everyone tonight, I'm not quick enough on the buzzer. Everyone's saying what I want to say or asking the questions I want to ask. So thank you, colleagues. But I just wanted to say, have a great February vacation, and please express that to, you know, all the faculty and staff, and it's well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on to finance reports. Steve or Bob, who's gonna kick it off?
I, I could just mention that we had a finance subcommittee last Monday, the first of February. In addition to reviewing the warrant, we did review the capital fee calculation for the non-resident communities. As you know, there are two types of non-resident communities. The type A that do not have access to at least five Chapter 74 communities and the type B that, that do. So for us, we've got one hundred and thirty-four students in the type A communities and thirty-two in the type B. So the calculation that is being submitted to DESI for the type A municipalities, the capital fee, the proposed capital fee is seven thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. And for the type B municipalities, five thousand six hundred dollars and forty-three cents. So we reviewed that and we will be submitting those, those calc's to DESI for their approval. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Okay, and the next agenda item in your packets is the, the special education increment fee, which is another fee that we charge to non-resident students. And we provided analysis that the FinCom did review at the prior meeting, and that identifies our special ed costs are in conformance with our reporting requirements to the Department of Education on the end of the year financial report. The analysis that you have in your packs tonight shows the fiscal year twenty actual costs to cap, cost to calculate both the total cost and the per student cost of special education services. We currently charged seven thousand four hundred this year, but every year it changes and we bring it forward to you based on our end of the year report. Based on this data, this is the request that the school committee vote to establish the special education increment fee for fiscal year twenty-two to be six thousand one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so let's open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments? I have Jeff, Alice.
So the fee is actually less this year. My assumption is that the reason it's less is that the overall costs of special education have not gone up, but the number of students who are getting that service has gone up because of the increase in population. I assume that that is the reason.
Pretty close. It's, it's gone up a little, but not much. You know, it goes up from every year, it goes up a little because of maintenance effort. We have to provide the same amount of effort. But it, as you pointed out, the managing our success, as Dr. B says, our enrollment significantly went up. So when you divide it by more students, the actual fee per student goes down.
And the resources we have are sufficient for the number of students that we have. There's nothing that we need to add beyond what we've already added for the additional students that we have. Is that also correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alice.
Um, I just wanted to say how great it is to see these calculations being done years and years and years ago. It was just a guess. It's, it's really great to see, you know, math.
Dr. B shared us with, with the FinCom that history that we went to this formula.
Well, we appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the, the next agenda item is the monthly list, informational list of donations under five thousand dollars. And in the packets, the school committee have the list. And you'll find that we, and we certainly appreciate the significant amount of scholarship donations that we received to the Lambrynos and the Ruzendi scholarships. And as you saw in your pictures in the packet regarding First Robotics, the First Robotics Club, they were very appreciative to get the, the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar donation that they received. So it's, it was a great month, and we'd like to have you vote to approve the monthly list of donations.
So moved. Okay, moved and seconded? Did we have a second? Did I miss it?
I'll second it. Steve moved it and I'll second. That's fine.
Any discussion, any questions?
I just want to mention, if you didn't know, Sandy Lambrynos passed away recently. She was a clerical secretary here for many, many years. She retired several years ago, and we lost her about, about three or four weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And, you know, please do pass on our condolences.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's do the roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes? Oh, Michael? Michael, we can't hear you?
Let me give us a thumbs up.
Okay, um, maybe you can put it in the chat if we can hear you?
He said yes.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, well, Michael's working on that. Why don't we move on, Steve?
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, anything else under finance?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to subcommittee reports, strategic planning.
Thank you. Minuteman has contracted with the organization, or Agility Advisors, as discussed in our last school committee meeting, to work with the Strategic Planning Committee, which is Alice and Pam and myself, to plan for a school committee retreat in the March-April timeline. And that'll be to continue the work that we did on January twenty-five, two thousand twenty. The goal of the retreat is to define Minuteman's strategic goals for the future and also define the school committee's leadership attributes needed to meet those goals. OAA is led by Jeff Lawrence. He's the managing director who will guide the process with the help of Stephen Hershey, who is the former superintendent of the Framingham and Beverly Public Schools. Jeff is currently engaged with Minuteman, working with the Minuteman executive team. So we thought that was great synergy. We anticipate the retreat would be on a Saturday. We're looking at March twenty-seven and April ten. And we're asking Julia to contact you all to ask your availability for those dates. I anticipate, and the committee and I haven't talked about it, nor Jeff, but I'm assuming, let's say, at nine AM to one o'clock, two o'clock, something like that, by Zoom, or preferably, if possible, at Minuteman in the Minuteman restaurant where we did it before, and of course, meeting all COVID requirements. If possible, because I think it's just better if we were all in the same room together, working on this. To get started, Jeff and Steve would like to talk to each one of you individually. And what he would do is send an agenda to you, so you know what the topic is, what the questions would be. And he would call you, he or Steve would call you at a mutually convenient time by telephone to have that conversation. And I'm assuming that would happen the next week or so, hopefully. So please.
So Ford, just for one, the twenty-seventh is Passover, just in case.
Then we'd have to find a different date.
Just in case people are concerned, so, okay.
We'll try to find a day on Saturday that, that works. But I'm gonna have him call. Now, he would, I've asked Julia to provide him with your email and cell phone number. If that, you have any objection to that, please contact Julia tomorrow. Because it'd be better for him to just call your cell phone, but if you have another preference, please tell Julia tomorrow. So that's it. It looks like March twenty-seven is not a good day, but we'd like to have it done as soon as possible, at least in early April. So we'll come up with two dates and we'll give them to you.
Um, okay, Alice.
I think Ford, I heard you say that, that she would be, Julia would be polling the committee to find out if they wanted to meet in person or not. I think that was part of what you said, right?
No, um, the polling the community, the committee to see what dates work for them.
Right, but I think we were gonna poll them also to find out about their preferences regarding in person or not in person.
Well, we can do that, but we first have to find dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, depending, the date may make a difference.
Yeah, I think if, if, if we can't have a hundred percent in person, then I think we would have to do it by Zoom.
Yeah. Any questions for Ford? Jeff?
I think that if we really want to maximize the chance of in person, then I think late April is the time. And actually, if we have almost everybody in person, we can have a hybrid model.
There you go. Okay.
But I think late April, looking at, you know, how things are rolling out, I would imagine late April before, because you need, you know, both shots and then two weeks, so.
Okay.
Say late April is your best bet.
Well, any other comments? Judy?
Um, thank you for doing this, and personally, I would like to meet in person. If we're going to fifty percent hybrid, if the kids can do it, we can do it. And just haven't, and Michael and I haven't had the opportunity to meet everyone in person, so this would be, you know, fun for us. So thank you.
Okay. Ed.
Yeah, I just, this reminded me, there are some town meetings that are happening on, on Saturdays. So, and that reminded me to remind you all to let me know when, if I haven't heard from your town already, or we've been sending out town meeting drafts for you to review. We're gonna be doing, recording some of those as is required in each individual town. But let me know about getting on any FinCom meetings or select board meetings or whatever kind of meetings I need to be on. Just reminding you that. Sometimes you hear about it before I do. Sometimes I hear about it before you do, Steve. So I'm not gonna assume we both know about it at the same time. Been doing it too long to make those assumptions now. Thanks.
Okay, so we will be sending out a survey for the, to confirm the date. We will also be doing the same and are also checking on in person or not. And you will be hearing from Jeff and Steve.
And/or Steve, yeah.
And/or, or Steve, um, but you know, shortly, so. Okay, shall we move on to policy committee?
Yes, this looks more complicated than it is. So page seventeen roughly, there is a copy of JFABD in your packet. That is not the one we're trying to delete. That is the new one that we want to keep. Okay, so what we're gonna take a vote on is approve for second reading the removal of the one that's not in the packet. But that is in the old manual from two thousand eleven.
So moved.
We need him. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion.
Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes? Uh, Michael, can we hear you?
He's still frozen.
Vote yes.
Okay, he voted yes. Steve?
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas Joe, yes. The next one, public comment at school committee meetings. This is the second time we've seen this. Steve Ladue asked us to add a paragraph. It's in red on the second page of the policy. If you look at that, you'll see it. I didn't receive any comments about this. I don't know if anyone else did, but we.
I think it's smart.
It's okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, Steve, does it meet your requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. So we need a motion to approve the public comment at school committee meetings.
So moved.
EDH for second reading.
Second.
Okay, um, any other comment or question on that? Okay, um, any other, uh, comment or question on that? Okay, uh, Pam Nurse acting yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to secretary's report. We have, um, two, uh, sets of minutes to review. Um, but because we may have, unless we have the same attendance, we should probably do it separately.
Yep.
So, um, Alice, do you want to take the, uh, minutes of January 12th first?
Yep, I received no comments. Do you want to have a motion for that?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion?
I want to make a quick point about them. I put a note at the beginning to say that this is kind of a COVID environment because there isn't going to be a historical record of what happened during this pandemic. It's all going to be electronic. There'll be a few archives somewhere, but the paper copies of these minutes may be the only thing that's left. And, um, I personally have found that the town meeting reports of what happened during the second world war or what happened during other times of great importance um, are very interesting. They talk about what kids were doing and what, what the problems were. They're fascinating and they're the only records. So that is why I put those notes on there. And I just, uh, I feel like it's really important to, to keep some kind of archival record of this terrible pandemic and how the schools adapted for future people who might, would be interested.
Well, and on that note, I, I do want to, before we move to the vote, you know, I guess I do want to comment on how much time and care both Julia and Alice put into putting these, um, minutes together. It's, uh, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Recalling, you know, none of you know this, almost none of you know this, but the history of the problems with Minutemen's at minute, minutes at Minuteman meetings and the, the ways we lurch from different ways of taking them and the, um, unnecessary conflict we used to have. The, uh, the quality of the minutes is, is, uh, the quality and professionalism of the minutes is greatly, and the speed in which we can go through them is greatly appreciated. These just sometimes take an hour.
Yeah.
That's why we put them at the end of our agendas. You remember that? I say we're taking.
They're the beginning.
So we move them all at the end. So people would just get them done to go home.
What a nightmare and how wonderful it is now.
Okay, well, we are, um, on comment on the January 12th minutes. So any other comments and then we'll move to a vote. Okay, Pam Nurse acting yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion for the January 26 minutes.
Were there any amendments?
Uh, there were no amendments. I do have one remark on those on page, it's page 10 of them. It's page 45 of the packet. There was a motion to go into executive session and in the agenda, it said that we were going to review some minutes and then vote on something. And it turned out that we, when we read the motion, we never read the, it was read twice.
Yeah.
But it never mentioned the minutes. So we did in fact review minutes during that executive session. We have to redo those votes. Cause we never, we never said we were going to do that. Anyway, um, what we did was, uh, just took action number 148. That's all. There were no comments.
Wait, I thought we didn't go into executive session at all.
That is correct. You're right. So we don't have to do anything.
Okay, so I will move to approve those minutes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comment? I was just going to say that Jennifer, we, we did not go into executive session. Okay, um, Pam Nurse acting yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Okay, final words on adjourning. Okay, Pam Nurse acting yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Oh, so good. So yes, we're under an hour.
Okay.
Very good, Pam. Yay.
Amazing.
Night, everybody.
Thanks, Bob.
The best for February vacation and we'll see you all in March.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, stay safe.